Ladies and gentlemen, can we stand for the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good evening, everybody. It's so nice to see so many people here tonight. Next on our agenda, we have exemplary people. Joe, can you introduce us?
Absolutely. I'd like to ask Bill McDonough and the Massey Robotics Team to come on up, over to the side. It's okay.
I'll tell you, medical.
So it's a pleasure for us to recognize Mr. McDonough, the other coaches, and the Massey Robotics Team as our exemplary people tonight. Massey Robotics is one of the premier VEX programs in the state, and that's in no small part due to the time and effort that Bill's put into the program. Robotics started in 2010, in the spring of 2010, with seventeen kids just at the high school. For the first two years, that's all it was, was just a high school program. In 2012, it blossomed out into the middle school as well. Today, we have one hundred and sixty-five kids between middle school and high school, eleven middle school teams, twelve high school teams. They've qualified for the world championships for the last ten years in program history. This year, they were the first team in Connecticut history to make it into the finals bracket, the first team in Connecticut to win a division at the Worlds. They received a whole bunch of accolades, and I would screw them up if I tried to say them all right now. So I'm going to ask Mr. McDonough to just say a few words about the program.
So yeah, we had a great year. I actually brought some stuff back for you guys. Joe, this is for you, and this is medals from the Worlds.
Wow, look at that.
So.
Thank you.
I would like to say I don't do much, but show up, open the door, and grill them questions. While we were there, one of the things you didn't say, we had over forty students volunteer to help run the event this year, coming out of COVID. They were desperate and in need of volunteers, and we had several students did four days of twelve-hour shifts of volunteering to help this event happen. We had five high school teams and one middle school team qualify. That's the most we've ever had qualify in terms of total number of teams. We got some people running in, senior night from volleyball. I was down there first, checking in with some of our guys. They're coming up now. We try and make our program so that anyone can be a part of it, athlete, band member, across theater member, everyone we've had involved. We have everything from special ed to valedictorians being involved in our program in the last twelve years, and it's a family, and it has been for a long time. We, four years ago, we had our X team was really our first team to make a splash at Worlds. Zach Chin, Bradley Gross, Mitchell Hornak. Who am I missing? Oh, Ryan Nicholas, Alex Moreno. Thank you. Sorry, Alex. And when they were seniors, they mentored our D team, which is Aiden Kusa, Will Galant, Ethan Rents, and Jake Moreno. This year, they as seniors mentored our team, and they made it to the final bracket. So we're passing on what we do from year to year. We're trying to get better. One of our big goals is to make sure the program is in a better place when you leave it than when you started with it. And so far, right now, we're doing a really good job of that. So there is some pressure on those returning members, because now that we've made it to what's called the Dome, which is the finals, we want to go back. So right now, it looks like, if I have my numbers right, we will grow again next year. We're going to stay at eleven middle school teams, but we may have as many as sixteen high school teams next year, and come close to two hundred students involved in the program.
Bill, what's the commitment during the year? What are these...
The teams that, our top teams are putting in forty to fifty hours a week outside of school. And our work sessions, we do four work sessions a week, two and a half to three hours a work session, two at night for kids who play sports and have other activities, and two right after school on days that there are late buses, so there's no problem with transportation. And then we have a ton of volunteer coaches and paid coaches, and, you know, we rotate through what we need to, to make sure we've got a lot of coverage. And most of it is just to make sure the doors are open and that we can ask them questions about what they're trying to do. But everything is built, programmed, maintained, all the strategies, everything is done by them. One of our rules is no adult can touch the robots. So, and I would tell you, out of the majority of programs that are out there, we're probably one of the few that actually holds to that rule.
And the Massey competition is usually the first weekend in December?
It'll actually be the third weekend in December. We had to switch it because there is an invitation, invitational elite event the first weekend in December at WPI, and we had seven teams get invited to go to that this year, and we're assuming we'll continue to do that. So we swapped our week of events so that we don't conflict with them.
Thank you, guys. Thank you for everything.
Yep, if I can just say too, on behalf of the board, congratulations. Keep up the good work, and you represent your school and us very, very well. We're proud of you, so thank you.
Thank you.
You want to get a picture?
This is less than a third of our whole team, just to let you know, so.
Squeeze down for a second.
You have a wide lens?
Sure. All right, everybody outside the bookshelves, coming from. I always make you look short. What's the matter? No, now you're tall, because you've got the short person in front of you. Are we close enough? I'd like to give a shout out to Ms. Kusa, Mrs. Rents, two other town people who are involved in giving their all to everything we do. So it doesn't work without all our help.
Bob, if that TV is working, can you turn that one on? That, all three of them, the one facing us? If it is, if... No. If not, it's okay. Okay, thank you, Massey Robotics Team. We will move on to reports of the committees. We will start with our student reps.
Good evening, Board of Education. I hope everyone's having a marvelous Monday. Seniors will be very busy in the following weeks with various upcoming events. The senior class assembly will be Friday, May twentieth, during flex in the auditorium to inform students of important end-of-the-year announcements and information. Thursday, May twenty-sixth, is Capstone Presentation Day, and there will be an early dismissal at eleven AM. The Senior Trip to Six Flags New England will be May twenty-seventh. Senior Awards will be on June second, and the Senior Banquet at the Stone Barn will be on June third, and senior final exams begin on June eighth.
Spring sports have been doing really well. Hot off the press, boys varsity volleyball just won their senior night game, winning the three sets in a row. Girls lacrosse has been on fire lately with a game average of thirteen and two, and both girls and boys tennis have SWCs this Thursday, so that should be exciting. Softball leaves off with winning their game against Pomrock for senior night, and baseball also won that same day for their senior day, six to one. Overall, spring sports have been making Massey proud these past couple of weeks, and sports awards are also coming up.
We have a bunch of different fundraising events going on as well. The junior student government is raffling off one free parking ticket for the next school year, and the Future Business Leaders Club, FBLA, is raffling off a chance to be principal for a day and for Mr. Swenson to take the role of a student for a day. The orchestra concert is going to be held at seven PM tomorrow. The band concert is going to be held at seven PM on May nineteenth, and the freshman dance will be held from six to eight PM on May twentieth.
Okay, thank you. Don't go anywhere just yet. For reports...
Diane is actually not there. She's home, looking, taking, she's doing notes.
For reports of the committees, I'd like to report the Health and Safety Committee met on 5/13. Schools are doing a good job in wrapping up the year with their emergency drills and listing some maintenance issues over the summer. Get some new cameras and repairs of doors and stuff. So they, our maintenance team has some work to do. And that was it for that meeting. Nick?
Thank you. CES met on May fifth. Two things to note there. CES has hired a new DEI specialist for the Cooperative Educational Services. That's to develop internal capacity for CES. And in addition to the person that's going to be working at Workplace CT in Bethel for the Northwestern RESC and us for mental health capacity to do PD for districts, there's going to be also DEI PD that is going to be available to districts run by this person that CES hired that can go out to the districts. So that'll be available to us for a cost, but it's there. And the only other thing from CES, the bulk of our discussion on May fifth was around the budget. We passed a budget unanimously. The expense side was down by two and a half percent, which I questioned vigorously, and I was told that it was due to the uncertainty of a major state grant and that they didn't feel comfortable including it in the budget until there was more certainty that they would receive it, because part of it was dependent on federal funds that were not known at the time. But I was told that that decrease was not going to affect any program that CES runs. As of right now, it's for additional things. It's for like wishlist things. So we did pass the budget. I forwarded information to the chair and superintendent about that, and everything else is going well.
And that two and a half percent was, that was passed was with those increases you had told us about, tuition?
Yes.
Okay. We know about those, right? Yeah, okay. All right, thank you, Nick. Anybody else? Committee reports? No? Okay. Hearing none, we will move, no others. We will report to the, move forward to the report of the chairman. I'd just like to make a note that our town budget passed on May third. There was unfortunately a very low turnout, so hopefully next year we can get a better turnout from the people of Monroe. It's very, very important that the people get involved and help pass a budget that's good for the town. But it did pass, and Joe, you have a budget.
Yes.
Joe, under number A, would you like to take that one?
Sure, sure. It's tradition here, over the past several years, to recognize our student board reps for all the work that they've done. So we just want to take this opportunity today. We have a, I think it's an Amazon gift card, so for those of you moving on to college, hopefully it'll help to pay some costs, and for those not, enjoy it this summer. But thank you, thank you very much for all your work this year.
Thank you. Give this one to Steve. Okay, that is all I have. We will move to public participation. And we have no one on the...
I didn't see anyone sign up.
Okay.
Oh, did you sign up? Okay.
It's okay. I'm going to open up the floor. Go ahead, come on up. State your name and address. You have three minutes. Thank you, go ahead.
Teresa Oliar, 133 Old Castle Drive. I thought it was going to be after the exemplary people, so I figured it was a good segue that I wanted to just take a moment to thank all of... I don't want to cry. Thank all of our amazing Monroe School District employees and staff that came out to help build our new playground this week. It was amazing to see. We had close to a thousand volunteers, the final count will find soon. But we had Mr. Kravza spend an entire shift, Mr. Ceccholini. We had, it was awesome that they were able to put together with Mr. Swenson and Mr. Schwartz to have Mr. Carino come with our Massey Woodshop students. And I just have to tell you that the kids worked so hard. They were so amazing. They helped each other. They taught each other things. They really just stepped in and just helped each other where there was gaps. And another parent came at one point and asked where the memory, the benches we had that people could sponsor, and one of which was for his daughter, who had passed away. And I was, he got choked up a little bit when, and he just was so proud when I told him that it was our Massey students that really worked on the benches and did a lot of the work for that. We had, I know that I would miss people. I know that I didn't get to see every staff member that came or district employee, so I don't want to miss anybody. But I, you know, our Nurse Canino, she's been there for the four years working on it. And Brian Diaz, who's a gym teacher at Stepney, who grew up in Monroe and is a little kid, and now brought his son, and he worked. And it was just a tremendous, tremendous thing, and the support of our school district was just phenomenal. And I think it's something that is special to Monroe and most school districts, just, they just don't have the magic that we have in Monroe. So I just wanted to say thank you to everybody, and thank you so much for supporting the project. We have a playground, and it's awesome. Please come soon. It's not ready just yet. The surfacing's here today. It's unloaded, and it'll start on Wednesday, being put down. And then after that, it'll be, it'll be, it's going to be awesome. So thank you for making it awesome.
Thank you.
I gotta just chime in. Jack and I volunteered. Jack got the wrong end of the deal. I work with Rob. Rob just came in. You're still in uniform, I see.
Yeah, he literally just came from the playground now.
Oh, my goodness. Yeah, we were working on a piece, most of the time I was there. My job was to kind of hold the board in place for Rob to kind of put it together. And meanwhile, Jack was filling up loads of dirt in the wheelbarrow, trucking with dirt all over the place and tamping it down.
I felt awful. He drew the short straw. It was awesome. It was a great community.
I'm so sorry. Not my three minutes is really... Also, we had not just the woodshop kids, but we had so many students that came from every like level and every school, and so many of them didn't even bring their forms. They just came to come, and families just came day after day. They just said, we had so much fun yesterday, even though they were digging holes, and they just kept coming back. And it was amazing to see the town turnout, but so many students, so also our students are awesome.
Thank you.
It was amazing. I was there yesterday. It was, it was amazing. And I helped with the nineteen ninety-two, which back then, I was in high school and helped, and then I brought my son to help and stuff. It was an amazing experience, for sure.
Yeah, very great. Anyone else here for public participation? Come on up. Sir, I'll be right with you. I name an address for the record. You have three minutes.
Yep, sure. At Michelle or twelve Marsh Pond Lane. So the reason why I'm here tonight is the transgender policy that is back on the agenda for this evening, and I have spoken about it in the past. But I am here just to kind of recap why I'm in disagreement with certain aspects of the policy. So I read the new policy that was posted in case there was any changes. And the first issue I have is with the privacy section. It states that the school should not disclose information that may reveal a student's transgender status or gender non-conforming presentation to others, including parents. As a parent, I think that's unconscionable to think that something of this magnitude could be kept from me, and I a hundred percent disagree with that as a parent of a ten-year-old. The names and pronouns, I mean, I get what that represents for a transgender student, but I'm worried about what it's going to do and how it's going to be enforced, because we're talking about children grades K through twelve, and calling a singular person "they" there is not going to come natural to a young child. I know it wouldn't for my daughter. She would be totally confused by that, and then she'd feel bad because she called the person the wrong thing. So I think that needs to be looked at. I mean, case in point, I just read a news story in Wisconsin. It happened yesterday. Three eighth graders are under investigation for not calling a transgender student their, you know, their pronouns, and now they're facing sexual harassment charges. You can look it up. Thirdly, the gender segregated activities, restroom, locker rooms, and sports. I've repeatedly said this in the past, that this is a huge problem for me, having a ten-year-old daughter. I'm a big women's rights advocate, and I feel like there's, rights are supposed to be protected under Title IX regardless of the transgender movement. And I feel our young women have rights to spaces free from male occupancy, fairness in sports, and they have a right to thrive and advance in their sport. And we have a perfect example of what happened here with three female track athletes in Connecticut who lost their rightful places in their sport. So that's a huge problem for me. And then lastly, I believe that a student's sexuality should be a private matter, and the school's responsibility to a transgender student should be the same as every other child to provide them with a safe and nurturing environment, free from discrimination and bullying. And our superintendent confirmed at a meeting last year that the current bullying policy protects transgender students. I think we need to better understand the intentions of this proposed policy and impact it would have on all students. Perhaps a better way to ensure all our students have the emotional support they need would be to form support groups that are inclusive of children dealing with a variety of mental health issues. I'm curious to know what data the B.O.E. member that proposes policy has that is driving the need for a separate policy, and what has been done to support transgender students to date beyond copying and pasting a CAPE policy and insisting that we should adopt it. Thank you.
Thank you. Sir, did you want to come up? Hi, please state your name and address for the record. You have three minutes.
John Distolio, Barn Hill Road. That lady was a hard act to follow, if you don't mind me saying so. Everything that I intended to say, she said, and I agree with. The only thing I can add, she pointed out specific passages, but there's more than, more than a few passages where I feel the language is not strong enough. There's a "should" or an "at the discretion of", and you should eliminate any of that language concerning the participation of the parents. When any of this issue is addressed in any way, the parents should be involved. The child cannot be taken from the family, cannot be separated from the family. And so that's, that's how I think about that. You got, you can't hijack the parents out of this situation. They're not your kids, and I'm not speaking to anyone, you know. The kids don't, I should say, the kids don't belong to anyone else except the parents, and that should be maintained. Separation of the family is a big thing, and it's an important issue. It may seem subtle with a few words, but it can be accomplished with a loophole. So I'd like you to eliminate that kind of language there, any loophole language. Thank you.
Thank you. Come on up. Hi, state your name and address for the record. You have three minutes.
My name is Jim Martinez, seventy-nine Old Castle Drive. I have four kids. I have two kids that have been through the Monroe Public Schools, and I have two still in the schools. I am a, an educator last thirty-two years, and I'm hearing, I'm hearing, I've been following and I've been hearing the public commentary on this transgender policy. And the opinions and the comments have really taken me back, because I remember when I became an educator formerly thirty-two years ago. I came on this job with the aspiration of making a difference for all kids, no matter who was in front of me. I don't know at what point this became so political where it's to the point where the judgmental attitudes and opinions toward others, especially our kids, is to the level that it is. More than half of transgender and non, and those who identify as non-binary teens in this country, according to the American Academy of Pediatrics, have attempted suicide. Most of those are boys, about thirty-seven percent. This is now back, this is before COVID. This is now going back data as far as 2018, and it's still as consistent. So what are we doing? You know, it's, you know, yes, they're, you know, as an educator, they're not my kids. You know, the kids that I, that I support and the kids that I have before me in the district that I work in, but when they're with us and they're not with you as a parent, they're our kids. And so it's our moral responsibility to respect, to support students of any identification. Today, we were, we're going to lay, it was the district I'm at, we had a seven-year-old, who, little girl, died in a fire. I lead the crisis response team for the district, was there to support the staff and the kids. Fast forward several years from now, let's hypothetically say it was a teenager, transgender, that died in a fire. Are we going to be judgmental about a student who dies in that way because she identifies as a boy? I've seen bullying is rampant now when it comes to transgender. That's all we, that's, in fact, the preponderance of the disciplinary, of suspensions and expulsions have, have been related to bullying. So we have to really rethink this. Yes, we can tweak the language, but we have to have a policy. It's their right. You know, again, I'm going to be judged by this, by what I'm saying, but I hope that we all consider that we are the magic that's been spoken about in Monroe, that we, when we came together to build a park, that we can do that to support kids of all genders. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else for public participation? Yes, come on up, please. Hi, can you state your name and address for the record? You have three minutes.
I'm Janice Persico, thirty-one Rodeo Drive. And I've been here before to talk about the transgender policy. I'm going to keep talking about it. I have a high school student who's a transgender child. I'm going to tell you exactly why we need this policy, because I was a parent that needed this policy. When my child came out to me as transgender, I was very taken aback. I was surprised, which is very common with a lot of parents of transgender students. You don't always know. And I had no idea what the Connecticut state laws were. And the people at Massey who were super supportive of my child did not know what the Connecticut state laws were. I didn't find out what those were until my child was at Yale at Children's Hospital for suicidal thoughts. That's when the staff there told me what the Connecticut policy was. I needed to know. I needed that to read. I needed the school psychologist, who's no longer at our school right now, she needed to know what the, what the state policy was. That is why we need this. And just the kids are listening to us, especially our Massey students right now. They are listening to these meetings, and they know what we are saying. And the parents speaking against this, you know, God forbid in the future their kid comes out as transgender, they need somewhere safe to go. They need to be a part of the Massey club that supports these kids and how to come out to their parents. And, you know, if they don't tell their parents right away, that's okay. They need the right place to get information and know how to do that, feel supported and loved. And that's what we need to give our children. All, all the students should feel safe and supported, and that's all we, even people who are speaking against it, that's what they want for their kids, too. That's what I want for my child. And I think having a policy that specifically talks about the needs of transgender students is absolutely needed. They're a different population. There's different needs. We absolutely need to know what we're doing with these children. And I think not only should we adopt the policy, we should also discuss making more gender-neutral bathrooms. So any student who doesn't want to go in the girls' room or the boys' room has somewhere to go. There need to be gender-neutral locker rooms, you know? That's, and these situations are not all black and white. There's not a lot. You can't just say, okay, this is an easy answer. But this policy is the step in the right direction that we need so we can continue going forward, supporting and loving all the children. But this policy is the step in the right direction that we need so we can continue going forward, supporting and loving all the children and whatever they need. They all deserve that right. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else for public participation? Hi, state your name and address for the record. You have three minutes.
Yep, Tracy Torres, 94 Riding Ridge Road. I just want to say in response to what others have been saying that I believe this town is incredibly supportive of all of its kids. And from what I've seen, all the parents believe in treating every child with respect and dignity, no matter what their presentation. I think we do that already. And I want to say that I assume that the intentions behind this policy are positive and that you're sincerely trying to protect vulnerable kids. I don't believe for a single second that this policy is intended to harm children. But I'd like to provide a translation of sorts to illustrate for you what many parents take from aspects of this policy. Where the policy says, "School personnel should not disclose a student's transgender or gender non-conforming status to parents." Parents are thinking, you do not get to take over the role of parent. Do you actually believe it's beneficial to keep essential mental health information from legal guardians who not only know their children best and love them more than anyone in the world, but will always look out for their best interest? Parents understand this keeping of sexual secrets by teachers and staff is not only creepy, but will do nothing but pit us against the school and break down trust between us. Where the policy says that school staff shall make every effort to support transgender or transitioning students, many parents understand that you are requiring staff to support the dysphoria, not the child's actual gender. We know this policy could usher more children down the path of gender confusion, which is a heart wrenchingly difficult one, with an astronomical rate of suicidality and can result in irreversible bodily changes that no amount of regret can ever fix. We understand that there is a social contagion aspect to this too. And we don't want you to enact a proposal that would reinforce and encourage that. Where the policy says the refusal to respect a student's gender identity is a violation, many parents understand that means that the school is going to punish kids and teachers who can't remember that friend X identifies as cake gender and requires being referred to as cake or cake self. Yes, there are two sixth graders who identify as cake gender right now in the middle school. Friend Y identifies as a demon, so you must call him demon self or deem. And friend Z is elf gender and therefore has to be called they elf or elf self. Many of us feel that society is lost if we agree that dolls, elves, colors, demons, and yes, even pastries can not only replace designations of male and female, but that such gender identities are so paramount as to force speech, to force our children, teachers and staff to speak lies. Yes, it is a lie that a girl can ever become a boy, just as it is a lie that, oh crap.
Just summarize, please.
In summary, we ask the board to vote down this proposal until many of these concerning aspects are amended.
Thank you. Come on up. Hi, state your name and address for the record. You have three minutes.
Jennifer Heitzke, 15 Shadowwood Circle. I wasn't prepared to talk, so forgive me if I'm a little shaky here, but my child, who's 28 years old, came out to me three years ago as transgender. It was the hardest thing for me to hear in my life. I will not deny it. And her father and I had a very difficult time understand, their, sorry, even I make mistakes. Their father and I had a very difficult time understanding and accepting it at first. And we were also very misguided in thinking this was just a phase, that this was just brought on by them going to art school. And I cry now thinking about how terribly we handled the situation. Three years I've tried to repair that. Now, this is me. I know people who have children who it took them three, four, or five years to come out and they were still afraid to because they had no idea what they were going to go home to. And these kinds of situations do lead to suicide. They do lead to suicide attempts. I am so grateful that I was able to keep a dialogue open with my child. But I can tell you right now that protecting these children and honoring their timing when they speak to their parents is so important in preventing these kinds of tragedies. I do work with the Trevor Project. And the need for counseling for these children is immeasurable and it's heartbreaking. To be able to sit there and look at a child and say, oh, you're just, it's just a phase. You're just hanging out with the wrong group of people. I said that to my child and it breaks my heart every day. Can you imagine a child going to a teacher, having the trust in the teacher? And as a former teacher for 32 years, hearing all sorts of things, never this. But going to a teacher that you love and trust because you don't know if it's going to be safe to go home and tell your parents, how they'll react, whether they'll kick you out, whether they'll disown you and put you out on the street, I can't even imagine. So we do need to have some kind of policy. I don't know what it is, but we need to protect these kids' rights to come out to their parents when they feel safe. And maybe that's a month, maybe that's two months, maybe that's five years. But not knowing what the background situation that they're going into when they go home, it's sometimes just too dicey. It's too scary. So thank you for letting me speak and share my experience.
Thank you. Is there anyone else for public participation? Thank you very much, everybody, for your comments. We will move on with the consent agenda with the approval of the minutes and the warrants. Any questions on minutes or warrants from anyone at all? No? Joe, would you like to talk about some appointments?
Absolutely. We continue to round out our administrative team for, for next year, 22, 22, 22, 23 school year. So if I could just ask Cory Evans, if she could just pop up for a second? I'd just like to introduce Cory Evans. Cory Evans will be filling the role left open by Jeff Seymour as our new secondary instructional leader of English Language Arts. A graduate of Boston College and as an English major, Cory earned her master's degree from Fairfield University. Her six-year degree in educational leadership from Southern Connecticut State University. She spent the last 12 years of her career at Oxford High School. She was a teacher for two of those years before becoming the English department chair in 2010. And then in 2020, she added on to her responsibilities by becoming the district literacy coordinator, while still managing to teach four courses, including ninth grade English and AP Language and Composition. So we're very excited to welcome Cory to the Monroe Public Schools team. And I know Jeff Seymour will be setting up some time for the English staff to meet Cory in the coming week. So welcome Cory. Craig Semple couldn't be with us tonight. He had prior engagements. But we are excited that Craig will be assuming the role of athletic director and secondary instructional leader of Health and Wellness on July 1st. Craig comes to us from Madison where he spent the last 18 years as the athletic director of Daniel Hand and would could arguably be considered probably the most successful athletic program in the state. Prior to his arrival in Madison, Craig was the athletic director instructional leader at New Fairfield High School. Craig earned his bachelor's at Northeastern in Boston, his master's at Southern, and his six-year in educational leadership at Sacred Heart. So we look forward to welcoming Craig while, when he gets here. I know he's already been working with Steve, with John DeGeneres. He's already, he's already, you know, getting his, getting his, getting his feet wet a little bit. And we have two teaching, two teaching appointments tonight. Emily Smith will be coming to Stetney next year as a first grade teacher. She'll be replacing Michelle Vanderhayden, who transferred to Monroe Elementary this year. And then Daniel Young as a social studies teacher at Massey, replacing Vicki Flamm, who's retiring this year.
Thank you very much. Any questions on, anything for the superintendent on this? No? May I have a motion to approve the consent agenda as presented? Jerry, seconded by Christine. Any further discussion? All in favor? Aye, unanimous. Thank you very much. We will move on with the report of the superintendent. Joe, go ahead.
Sure. I'll kick it over to Ron first for the fund activity statement.
Okay, so the first three pages of your fund activity statement are the board's operating budget. If you look at the bottom, you're showing available budget of about 3.6 million available. There's about seven weeks left in the fiscal year. There are, the vast majority of the salaries are encumbered, but there still are a lot that aren't. I don't think it's any secret, we are going to have a surplus this year driven by special education. That number will come down. But we're going to be, over the next seven weeks, we'll be meeting with some of the departments to see how those funds can be utilized to maybe lessen the blow next year. Anyone have any questions?
No, that's good news. We like that. Any, any questions for Ron? No? Okay, thank you.
And the only other thing I had was just, just another quick reminder that we'll be celebrating our retirees in the next few weeks. The district, the district retirement party scheduled for June 1st at the Water View again starts at 5 o'clock. In addition to the reckoning, retirees, we'll also recognize staff for their years of service, as well as introduce our 2022, 23 Teacher of the Year. And then that sets June 1st. And then June 6th, 6:30 in here, we'll recognize our retirees beginning at 6:30 and they will be our exemplary people for the June 6th meeting starting at 7 o'clock.
Thank you. Anything for the superintendent? Go ahead.
Excuse me, the June 6th, 6:30, you'll have, that start time will be on the agenda, right?
The, the meeting still?
Pre the meeting.
It's before the meeting, at 7?
I'll put it in my calendar.
Yeah, put it in your calendar.
I'll put it, I'll make sure it's in, we can review it too.
Oh yeah, good idea.
Refreshments are served, so a lot of people come. Anything else for the superintendent? Okay, we'll move on to all business. First item is curriculum second review with a vote anticipated. Approval on the new course African American Black and Puerto Rican Latino Studies as presented to us last meeting. May I have a motion to approve the new course of African American Black and Puerto Rico, Puerto Rican Latino Studies as presented? Nick, can I have a second? Jerry, any discussion? I'd like to just say thank you, Ian. Very good presentation. We enjoyed it. It was very well laid out with questions and dispelling some rumors about the course. So thank you very much. It was a good presentation.
Thank you.
Any further discussion? Okay, all in favor? Unanimous? Thank you very much. Okay, we shall move on to new business. We have several policies to do first review, which means they will come up at next meeting for a vote. The first policy, actually, I'm going to, I'm going to combine number one and two together because they do go together. 1120, public participation at Board of Education meetings. And 9320, bylaws of the board. We've looked at this two or three times. I think Policy Committee's done a pretty good job of wrapping this together. And I'll go to Jack first. Any comments on that, Jack?
No, just a quick, the revision eliminated duplication and inconsistencies regarding time provided for public participation and the time permitted for each individual to address the board. And clarification was made in the revision as to public participation as an agenda item as opposed to the autonomy provided the board chair to recognize non-board members to speak on agenda items. And then 9320, as you said, is a, is a byproduct of the work on 1120. And 9320 bylaws of the board included public participation. And rather than take the risk of any kind of contradiction, we're amending 9320 to direct the reader to policy 1120.
Right, right, because they did conflict.
They did.
Thank you. Christine, anything on that, on those two? No? Jerry, anything?
That was awesome. Yeah, that was great.
Okay. Okay, any other comments or discussion on those two since they kind of go hand in hand? No? Okay, thank you. We will move to policy 3541, transportation. Jack?
Yeah, this, the policy itself addresses all aspects of transportation for students in the Monroe Public Schools. The revision is actually a very specific one, addressing drop off procedures for students in grades one through five. Students in grades one through five may opt to remain on the bus if an authorized adult is not present at the bus stop. Also, students in grades one through five may be dropped off without an adult present provided a signed note from the parent is on file at the child's school and with the bus company.
Christine? Jerry?
Once again, very, nice job.
Any further discussion on transportation? Okay, hearing none. Jack will go to policy 5131.7, weapons?
Weapons of dangerous instrument. This policy confirms the board's stance and philosophy of the district. Possession, concealment, and or use of a weapon by a student is detrimental to student and staff safety and not to possession or use of any such weapon on school grounds, in a school vehicle, or at any school-sponsored activity is prohibited. Policy defines and details the description of various weapons and the possible actions that can be taken by the board when addressing a student that possesses such a weapon.
Christine? Jerry?
Lays out everything.
Exactly.
Okay, okay.
Makes our job easy.
I know, I know. That one, I have to admit, I have to, I went through it once. I'd like to reread it again because there's a lot of reference to state law that I'm, I'm familiar with, with that. And just want to make sure, I know there was inclusion in there for police officers on duty. But I'm just going to read that, read through that one more time myself. Any further discussion on weapons policy? Anyone? No? Okay, moving right along, policy 5131.911, bullying. Go ahead, Jack.
And of course, overall, the bullying policy confirms the board and district's commitment to a safe school climate, free from threat, harassment, and any type of bullying behavior. The mandated revision to this policy is in regard to the Safe School Climate Committee. Each school principal must establish a Safe School Climate Committee responsible for developing and fostering a safe school climate. The revision is the committee must include at least a teacher, nurse, and at the high school level one student.
Christine? Jerry?
That's exact, that was the only change. It was the safe, yes.
Jack, with that, I read in there that there are two exceptions to the student being on board, some discussions, correct?
Yes, yeah.
Because when I first read that, yeah, the, the.
Certain discussions and decision-making matters, the student would be excused.
Okay. Did that policy also make a reference of, to make changes to policy? That committee would make changes to policy? There was one that I read, and I think it was bullying, that I have to, again, I'm going to review it again. But there, I thought that policy, part of the duties of that policy was to recommend and make changes to the policy, which they can't do. So I'll, I'll look through it.
Yeah, I mean, I, I don't expect that, that it would say changes to the policy. There could be, there could be a statement about recommendations.
Yeah, yeah, I'll, again, I'll review that one again. Okay. Anything else on that? From anyone? No? Okay. We shall move forward to policy 6159, IEPs, Individual Education Programs, Special Education Program. Go ahead, Jack.
Again, the, the overall policy outlines the district's commitment to state statutes regarding identification of and planning for the educational needs of students with disabilities. The mandated revision to the policy details the protections provided staff when making recommendations at a PPT meeting. It also revises and aligns the student age at which post-secondary goals are established to assist the student in reaching their goals. The revision further establishes the need for PPT to address student transition to a technical school.
Christine? No? Again, Jerry?
Protects the staff member when they make a recommendation. That's, that's the change.
Alan?
Isn't that, we're just getting to it now, but hasn't, like, this been in the books for over a year and a half?
Meaning on our?
No, I mean, it's been law like at least a year and a half.
Owen?
The, I think the update was the age piece. There was.
There was, there was a discrepancy in ages for the transition planning. Is that what you're referring to, Alan, the transition?
No, I'm talking about kids aging out at 22 and-
That, we had made that revision some time ago, yes.
And the recommendations made by professional staff. I mean, I, I just, no, I was just saying, I just, I just thought it's been around for at least a year and a half.
Yeah, they detailed the definition of professional staff and expanded that.
Oh, okay.
As to who that protects. You're right, the staff in general is protected, but it expanded that.
Okay.
The age going up from 21 to 22 was a court decision, correct?
Yeah.
Yeah?
Yes.
Okay. Any further discussion on that policy? No? Okay, moving forward. Policy 6146.2, I'm sorry, 6146.11, grade weighting and class ranking. Go ahead, Jack.
This policy was mandated. The mandate is based on a district's support for, or not having weighted classes. It confirms our district's support and use of weighted grades. It also commits the district to communicate to parents as to whether certain specific advanced classes are weighted or not, which we do already through our program of studies, but this places that in policy.
Christine? Anything? Jerry? Okay, any questions or further discussion on that one? No? Okay, we're moving right along. Next one is Policy 5141.21, administration of medications.
And the policy outlines the procedures followed by the district concerning the administration of medications to students during the school day. The specific revision removes any reference to student age when determining if a student can self-administer medication through an inhaler, insulin, or injector cartridge. The ability to self-administer will be based on recommendation from the student's healthcare provider, parent, and school nurse.
Christine? Anything on that one?
No, so what was changed was just that age. That, that's it, the age, yeah.
Okay. Obviously Dennis and Shannon are not here tonight, but Dennis had a question on that one. He's asking about the second paragraph under the emergency administration of medication. Second paragraph has to change. Designated staff member may give emergency medication orally or by injection. Narcan is a nasal spray, so would that cover us, is his question? And maybe that's to go back to the, a school nurse and ask? Bless you.
Bless you.
So I just wanted to put that in there, yeah, okay? Unless they have something other than the nasal spray?
I don't believe so. But I can check.
So we just want to make sure that that is covered under orally or an injection language. It's probably a legal technicality, yes, Nick?
I also just had a question. This is administration of medications only from Board of Education employees, right? So if an EMT was to come to a building and they were to administer some type of medication, they wouldn't be liable under this?
No.
No, no, they're acting under the 911 system. But this also covers, students at a certain age could self-inject.
Got it.
You know? Epi, so, yeah. Jeff, did you have something? No?
No, I, I, not on this, but I, if we could circle back to the transportation part before we get to the, the next topic.
Next one?
The way I read this on the transportation was, what I have an issue with is the, the distance at which we're talking about potentially having kids walk as up to a mile?
I think that's state law, right, Joe? We have to provide transportation over a mile?
Yes. Right, I'm trying to understand, like, you could walk a mile to your bus stop?
Correct.
Yeah.
We may provide transportation, but if-
Well, I'm sure that's not always the case.
But it's not must, yeah.
I just, but it's state law that they essentially up to a mile, that kids have to walk.
I believe that, I believe those-
I think that's where we have our, our discretion is within that first mile. But I think we provide it at times, don't we, Joe?
I don't know, I don't know if you walk a mile. Is that what you're asking?
Yeah, I don't know.
I think we, your, your question is, you're concerned about kids having to walk approximately up to a mile to get to the bus stop.
But I don't think we-
That would be age appropriate, too.
Yeah.
Right?
Yeah, and I don't think, I mean-
I don't think we make it into-
I think we offer, no, and I think we offer busing-
A lot, yeah.
For kids who live less than a mile from schools, right?
There's nobody-
There's no walkers that are-
There's no walkers.
That's what I mean, so, I don't think. I think it is a state. I'm a positive as state, with, the mile is a-
I was just looking at it from the hazardous conditions. It says, students enrolled in gates K through 4 is one mile. I'm not saying that we do, I'm just saying-
No, it's a good, it's a good question.
Yeah.
That it should be our policy that we could potentially make kids K through 4 walk one mile to the bus stop, that's all. I mean, if it's state law, state law, I mean, I, that I don't know, I can't speak to that.
I think our, our practice is maybe different than the policy. Our practice is that we try to provide it. But if it came down to it, it's, it's our policy to follow state law.
I can find out where those standards came from, because I don't know if it's like the, I don't know, if it's like the National Highway Transportation, or if it's the, whatever the Busing Association is, but we can find out where those, because that's just not, those came from, they didn't come from the board.
I'm sure they did, right.
And a kindergarten can't just walk out of school.
I mean, the bus company does, is very conscious in making sure that, you know, kids' stops are, are safe and they're not walking. I don't know anyone who, I used to walk, my kids walked, you know, it's like two tenths of a mile to the end of the street. I don't know many people who walk much further than that. But, but I hear what you're saying, we can find out where that, where that language came from.
Sure Mike would know.
Oh yeah, absolutely.
Okay, so back to administration of medications, anything from anybody? No? Okay, moving right along. Policy 5145.53, transgender and gender non-conforming youth. This policy was submitted by a board member, so I will go right to that board member and Jack. If, Jack, anything, or we'll turn it over to Nick who submitted it?
I can give an overview, if you like, the, the policy confirms that the district complies with all state laws and will be free from discrimination based on sex, sexual orientation, or gender identity or expression. The policy sets guidelines for the schools and district staff to address the needs of transgender and non-conforming students, and clarifies how state laws should be implemented in situations where questions may arise about how to protect the legal rights or safety of such students.
Christine, Shannon's not here, so any, any further comments on that?
No, I wasn't at that meeting, so, for policy.
So what would you like me to say to you, sir?
If I understand it correctly, there was not a motion or a vote on this from the Policy Committee, right? It was decided to move to the full board?
Correct.
Okay.
We had thought, we had done our due diligence, excuse the mouth apparatus that I have in. So we, we had thought, Jack, am I saying, you were at the meeting too, am I saying this right? So our, our feeling, Shannon and I, was to move it on to the full board and let the full board, since they're going to vote on it eventually, let the full board look at it as one.
Okay. All right, thank you. Nick?
Thank you. First of all, I want to thank everyone for coming tonight and over the last 10 months, for everybody coming up to speak. I always tell my students that when you see something that you're passionate about, you need to take action on it. And I very much appreciate everyone who physically came to this building and got up and gave your name and address and spoke, no matter what side you were on, I applaud you for that, so thank you for coming. I just want to, I don't have a big written-out speech, I just wanted to refresh everyone's memory about how we got here. We started this discussion 10 months ago, and up to this point, there's been a lot of procedural questions. We went over Policy 9311, that a board member, or actually an employee of the Board of Education, or a citizen could propose a policy that, according to our policy, must be forwarded to the Policy Committee. It's been with the Policy Committee, they've been looking it over, and it has now come to us for a first review. I don't really have too much to add to the merits or the content of the policy. With the permission of the chairman, yesterday I sent the report I prepared to the full board and our super, assistant super, and incoming assistant super, just so we were all on the same page. I know it's not the traditional Friday at 4 o'clock when we get our agendas, so I understand it was crunch for time as of yesterday. Since we started talking about this about nine or 10 months ago, other districts have implemented this. Norwich, Waterbury, New Haven, and I'm missing one. There have been other districts across the state that have adopted this. A lot of the stuff in the policy, if you read it, we do have a bullying policy, 0521, that talks about bullying with regards to sexual orientation and gender identity. That policy more specifically talks about student-on-student contact, student-on, not contact, student-on-student bullying. A lot of what's in this policy is from the adult in the building to the student. There is, so it's about teachers and administrators using correct pronouns. It's about the district and the board and the superintendent keeping official records according to the student's wishes. So a lot of this is about from the adult, and when I say adult, I'm using that as a broad term to include teachers, administrators, paras, whoever is the adult in the building at the time. And lastly, I would say, why do we need this? We have other policies in our policy book right now that talk about specific protected classes. We have a policy about racial and ethnic harassment. We have three policies, very detailed policies actually, around religious accommodations for students who need a specific physical space at a specific time of day, and many other things with regards to religious accommodations for staff. We have policies around homeless students that talk to socioeconomic status. We have a policy around migrant students that talk about, that's linked to national origin. So the only thing I'd say here is, you know, why do we need this policy? One of our three main functions as a Board of Education is to create policies. And policies are our laws. They're the laws of the Board of Education that the board gives to the superintendent for him to execute. And we don't only create laws for now, we also create them for the future. We had some very interesting data that we did, that the board undertook, the administration undertook in November of 2019, which was the climate survey. We had a follow-up to that climate survey that specifically talked about sexual orientation and gender identity bullying at Massey. Students were asked to, there was also an option of prefer not to say, but they could self-identify with a sexual orientation. About three-quarters of our Massey students identified as heterosexual. About 20% of our Massey students identified as something in the LGBTQ+ community, and about 5% preferred not to say. Those numbers are striking to me, as someone who studies this, this type of information. Just as a follow-up to that, Gallup published a poll in February of 2022. They surveyed people and how they identified with regards to sexual orientation and gender identity, and they captured the first six years of Gen Z. The reason it's the only first six years is because everybody had to be 18 or older to participate in the, in the survey. And in that survey, it was 75, 20, and 5. It was almost dead-on to what we have here at Massey. And so that provides external validity to the survey that we did. There's also some troubling data in the follow-up climate survey that we did in 2020, 2021, around sexual orientation and gender identity bullying and reporting. And so, to conclude, a policy is a law. We don't make it just for now, we make it for the future. These kids are here, and I think that we should have a policy that lays out in detail, in black and white, on paper, issues around how we handle issues like these.
Thank you. Any further discussion on this?
Just one question. Nick, just so I'm clear, because I appreciate what you sent over earlier, but when you sent over, you sent over, there were two, correct? Cave policy recommendations?
Yes, so in the, in the big report, in the back, there's Cave recommended 1 and Cave recommended 2, yeah.
This one, the one that we have front of us, is reflected in number 1?
This is actually a hybrid of both.
Okay.
There's, so, that's actually a great question. I did not author any language in the policy. It is all, I did not change a word. It is certain sections of the recommended 1 and recommended 2 that came together in what's in front of us.
Alan?
I guess I'll, Nick. In, in this policy, it's, correct me if I'm wrong, but it's already current law. Every, you know what I mean? It's just, since we're using the Cave language, it's already state statute or state law, everything that is being proposed.
So yes and no, and let me explain. There are several different statutes that apply to discrimination in public schools. I've learned more about some of them than I wanted to know, but I'm, it's good that I know them. 10-16C talks about discrimination in public schools. The State Department of Education and the Commission on Human Rights and Opportunities have dual jurisdiction over that statute. There are also other fail-safe statutes under 46A, which are exclusively CHRO statutes that talk about places of public accommodation and discrimination with sexual orientation and gender identity. In September of 2017, the State Department of Education and the Commission on Human Rights and Opportunities published two documents, FAQs and guidelines to school districts around protection of transgender and gender non-conforming students. All of the language in there is supported explicitly, and in some cases implicitly, by state statute. All of that was brought into this policy. And as I said, I didn't author any of this, and so this has gone through Cave's legal review. And at the back, you can see cross-references to those statutes and court cases as of today that have changed anything relevant to the language in the policy.
Okay. I think the other thing I wanted to point is that you're not making any of this, pulling this out of the blue, just saying, oh, this is something I would want to see implemented. Everything in that, in that has been taken from either, so, state law or what you just said?
Yes.
Anything further?
I just-
Alan, yeah, go ahead.
It was just, I, I'd just like to comment. One of the parents said that the kids are watching, and I was reading up on this issue, and as we know, the suicide rate is astronomical for these students. And I was reading a study by FiveThirtyEight, they do all these statistical studies, and they said that it's, the suicide rate's high enough to begin with, but it's even higher if the students don't feel that they're supported by the school system. So when that parent stood up and said the kids are watching, it just really, you know, that was powerful.
Thank you. Anybody else? Nick?
Just to conclude, I, I know this is a first review, I know a second review will be at our next meeting. I would offer to all board members, happy to sit down over lunch, coffee, over the next three weeks.
You're buying?
Sure, absolutely. It might just be Duncan in that case, but I'm happy to discuss this with anyone, administrators included, with the chair's permission, at length, before we vote. And-
We had coffee.
We did, we did. And I just want to make sure that that invitation is out there to everyone.
Thank you. We will move on to number 11, executive session, discussion, discussion involving the food service contract. Vote anticipated in public session after our executive session. So can I have a motion to go into an executive session? Christine, seconded by Jerry. Just so that everyone knows, we will come out, we have a vote expected, and we will do the vote here, and then we will adjourn from there.
Dave, and to add, to add the super and?
Oh, yes, and we are inviting Ron, and Joe, and Jack. Thank you. Any discussion on that? All in favor? I, unanimous, thank you very much. We will go into executive session. Back room? Okay, it is 8:29, we are out of executive session, we're back in our meeting, and I would- would, does anyone have a motion to give the superintendent permission to enter into an emergency one-year agreement with SEDEXO? Jerry, seconded by Justin. Any further discussion? No further discussion. All in favor? Aye, unanimous. Thank you very much. That is the end of our new business. May I have a motion to adjourn? Jerry?
Mr. Chair, motion to adjourn.
Christine? Any discussion? All in favor? Jeff? Okay, unanimous. Thank you very much. Good night, everybody.